... flag allegiance.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ashley, can I have a roll call, please?
Jerdy?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Briggs?
Here.
Cavalier?
Here.
Cressel?
Here.
Klat?
Here.
Ved Bratton?
Here.
Melby?
Here.
Okay, it's time for the open forum. Anyone would like to address council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda may come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Hearing none will move on.
Your Honor, there is no one waiting on our phone bridge. Chad, would you be able to log it off?
I am sorry, that, I am... I am... I am sorry. Agent logged off.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. This brings us to a presentation and public information announcements. We have one from Chris Blake with the library. Come on up.
Mayor Stanbrook and members of the council. I believe I was here last fall sharing with you what was happening at the library. It's been a long year, to say the least. And looking back on it, I'm not sure how we all made it through, but we did, and I think maybe for the better. Despite all of the setbacks, despite a lot of the negativity that's, you know, taken place over the past year with everything that's gone on, a lot of the concern, the fear, we've managed to really enhance our services, really make a lot of, I think, really critical improvements to the library and to our service for the community and really beyond. I brought with you, with me to share with you just a few of the things that we've been working on. And basically, it starts with the fact that we will be resuming our regular open hours this coming Saturday, May 1st. We've been open Saturdays from 10:00 to 2:00 for the last several months. And the only other adjustment to our regular hours that we've had is we've been closing on Monday evenings at 6:00 as opposed to 8:00. Normally, we're, we've been open traditionally Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and then Thursday, Fridays from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturdays 10:00 to 5:00, Sundays from Labor Day through Memorial Day from 1:00 to 5:00. But in the last several months, we did scale back a little bit, and we cut off a few hours on Saturdays. We have been closing at 2:00, but we will resume again, closing at 5:00 p.m. this coming Saturday, May 1st, as well as resuming a week from tonight, our regular hours on Monday evenings until 8:00 p.m. So as of Mon, Saturday, the 1st, we will be back to complete regular staffing and, as well as open hours. We are also back to full staffing at the library. About a year ago, when COVID began, we lost one of our full-time members to retirement. And then shortly after that, in the early fall, we, well, it was probably mid, actually mid to late fall, we lost another full-time staff member. One of those staff members was rehired for, that position was rehired for in December, just this past December. And now we have also hired another full-time staff member who will be locating, relocating to Crookston this coming weekend. She'll move in and is happy and excited to be a part of our community. Those are both full-time positions, so we are at regular full staff again. Some of the things that we've added since COVID started, we have added curbside service. That has never gone away. We still offer curbside service and will continue to offer curbside service to any and all customers that want it, even post-COVID. That'll be a regular service now that we provide, as well as an online application for new library cards. We never had an online application before, we're excited about that. We've added Hoopla, and that is a digital streaming service for eBooks, music, and movies. If you have a library card, you can stream any of those, any of those things. We've added wireless hotspots, so we actually have 42 or 43 hotspots for checkout in the Laurel catalog. So if somebody doesn't have access to internet service, they can check out a hotspot and they can keep that for three weeks. And those are also able to be renewed unless there's a hold on them. We've also added Printch, which is wireless printing, and it's an app that you can get on your phone, and people can literally print their items at the library from the comfort of their home. They can pay for it on a card, or they can pay for it when they come to the desk, or with PayPal even. We've also added a significant amount of virtual programming. Obviously, we haven't been able to have in-house programming since COVID started, and we don't plan to resume any in-house programming until probably fall. Having said that, we have had hundreds and even thousands of people tuning in to our virtual programs in the past year that we've had, and that we will continue to do again post-COVID, because we have just found that there are so many people that aren't able to take advantage of the programs we do offer, because it, it just falls on the night when they have a work commitment, when they have a, one of their kids', you know, games, or concerts, or, you know, any number of commit, you know, things going on, could be adverse weather, inclement weather, just a number of reasons why people can't get to the library, but they can tune in now virtually, and we, we use Facebook Live for those events, and it's just been, been going really, really well. So we're going to continue to do a lot of virtual programming even after we get back in, in, with in-house programming. And I'd also like to add that we're resuming our Sunshine Storytime, which we developed last summer as a result of COVID. We had an outdoor storytime that was being, I, I think that approximately 20, 25 people were coming to that on a weekly basis, and that will resume on Thursday, May 6th, at 10:30 in the morning. It was on Wednesdays, but it'll now be on Thursday mornings at 10:30, which is when our storytime used to be held. We've also added e-magazine selections to our collection. And we've recently, I'll touch on this a little bit again in a few minutes, but we have also added now recently laptop kits. These are a combination of a Chromebook with a mouse and a hotspot. We're going to have six of these available for the public, and we're also offering them to our partners, because we have new partnerships with Northwestern Mental Health since COVID began, as well as Career Force. We have a number of their clients coming in for different needs, whether it be looking for work and us helping them on the couple of public computers. We plan to offer workshops such as resume writing and interviewing skills and things of that nature. And we've also been working Northwest, with Northwestern Mental Health, as their staff have been coming to meet with their clients in the library for several months as well now. So these laptop kits with the Chromebook and the hotspot, we feel like it'll give their, their folks an opportunity that don't have a computer at home, that maybe need Zoom, they need the ability to meet with somebody online, but they can't do it currently. They can either come to the library and use a public computer, or they can actually check out one of these laptop kits, and Crookston is the only pilot for that program. We're the only branch that'll be offering that, because we're the ones that are really partnering right now with a number of different places to provide resources and services to the community. I mentioned Career Force. We've also been appearing in their e-newsletter for several months with some of the things going on at the library, and we will also be advertising their initiatives on our digital advertising within the library itself, too. So the partnerships have really been, I think, just a wonderful thing that have come out of all this. It is also, we've added a legal kiosk. So the legal kiosk was, they came to us with the idea of adding these kiosks, and Breckenridge, Detroit Lakes, Moorhead, Crookston, and Fertile, so we have two in Polk County, now have these legal kiosks. They've been provided to us through Legal Aid Minnesota, and they used CARES funding for those kiosks. We actually, I worked with Amy to retrofit our, our room within our meeting room for, to make it ADA compliant for our kiosk, so that people would have privacy. We'll have to do a little bit of creative scheduling with that meeting room, so that we can make sure that we're not double booking at the same time, but I think it's, it's going to work out with the scheduling software that we're going to be using now. But this basically gives their clients the ability to access legal information, attend court hearings, and connect directly with the legal aid or meet with their attorney. If they don't have transportation to get to court or to get to a attorney meeting, they can actually come to the library and meet with them via this portal. They have access to a scanner and printer with that, with that kiosk, and then the kiosks will also provide safe access to their legal information and legal aid lawyers across the service area, and for that matter, the state, if they need it. So we're very excited about the legal kiosk as well, and that's just getting going here in May. The other thing I wanted to mention is that it's our 60th anniversary, like the Minnesota Twins and the Minnesota Vikings, and the Gophers, who I think we last won our last Rose Bowl, Minnesota Gophers, maybe in 61. It was also the year that Lake Agassiz Regional Library came to be. So we're excited to be celebrating our 60th anniversary, we're offering a number of different giveaways and things, 60 books for 60 years. There's just some promotional things that are going on with reading books, our Summer Library Experience, which we always work closely with the city on, with the club kid, kids coming for it and everything, and a number of other people in the area. All of the kids that are signed up for the Summer Library Experience this year will be receiving a T-shirt from Lake Agassiz Regional Library, which our friends at the library have supported, as well as the friends at Detroit Lakes and Moorhead locations as well. So the kids will all get a T-shirt for that, and some books and things of that nature, so we're excited about that. We have a number of legacy programs on tap for the coming year, including something that I kind of initiated with a summer concert series that I'm excited about. We're going to be hosting a outdoor summer concert in front of the library on June 17th, weather permitting, and our rain date is the 24th, with Anthony Diaz. And we hope to have a food truck out there. We've got the portable patio already reserved, and we plan to have a storytime that night and time for browsing and things like that. In the library, we'll have extended hours that day on that Thursday. So we're kind of excited about that. And then there'll also be a concert in July, early July, in Detroit Lakes with Tim Egberton, and then another artist in Moorhead in early August. So all of that'll take place prior to Oxx Card Days. I'd personally like to thank Senator Mark Johnson publicly here in front of our council. Senator Johnson has, is the author, the chief author for Senate Bill 1131, and then the House side of it is its HF 1710. This is a bill that basically is going to increase funding if passed for about $2 million in regional public library system support and a formula change to the RLBSS funding, which is Regional Library Basic System Support. And in essence, what that means is it's both in the House right now, in the education bill for both the House and the Senate, it's the farthest it's ever gone, and it would take some of the pressure off of signatories like Crookston and others, for Polk County, all the counties and the public, you know, the city signatories that we have. We haven't seen an increase in our funding from the state for about, I think, since 2008. And so a bigger piece of the pie keeps going to the larger metro areas, because it's based on numbers of the population and so on, and so we're actually excited that this has made both of the Senate and House sides bills and in the education bill. So we're keeping our fingers crossed, no promises, but we're hopeful. So I'd like to thank Senator Mark Johnson for authoring that, and just keep our fingers crossed. With that, I'd like to add that I've been working closely with Amy. I have found Amy to be very helpful, very informative, and I think just a good partner between, you know, us and the city. I mean, it's a partnership, and I've just, it's been encouraged by the, the times that we have been able to meet and talk about just where we go going forward. I think you, when we were, I was here last fall, most of you council members were here then, and if you remember correctly, I think Mayor Stanbrook just said, you know, let us know some of these things that we need to kind of get going and working on, and some of the improvements, and we've been talking about those things, and so we're trying to set forth a plan that is realistic, that's feasible, and that's well thought out and planned for. And so fingers crossed on some of that, too, but we'll wait and see where it goes. So. Does anybody have any questions I could answer?
Chris, I just have one. Are those dates that you mentioned, are those on like this library's website that we could look at?
Okay. Yes.
Thank you.
All of the programming and event dates are on our website. They should be, and if they're not, they will be for summer. As well as the new hours, they will be posted. There will be a press release going out, if it hasn't already this week, for our new, new, new hours, resuming our regular hours. And then I'll be going on Valley Talk on Friday morning as well, to let people know about the things that are, that are going on, some of the things about the partnerships, the services, Summer Library Experience. It's yet, we've yet to determine whether or not we can get out to the schools to let folks know, and the kids know, and the teachers, and so on, but one of the things that I really have been encouraged by since I came several years ago is that one of my big focal points was just really try to work closely with the schools. I'm also happy to report and thankful to Dr. Jeremy Olson from the Crookston School District. I don't think that these relationships have ever been as strong as they currently are. We've always worked together, but we've had numerous classes from Highland come over from our saviors, so both public and private, but Dr. Olson has been very supportive. We've tried to be supportive of him. We had a number of distance learners in our library. I will share one success story with you. About a year ago, we had a woman that came into town that had relocated from a not great situation out of state. She came with her daughter. Her daughter wasn't enrolled anywhere in school. She needed a place to study and do her homework, and she found a safe haven in the Crookston Library, and I'm proud to say that we were able to make contact with that family and options, and that that family is living here, working here, and happy and thriving, and sent us Christmas cards, and it felt good. So.
I'd like to make a comment. I sit on the Crookston Library Board and the Laurel Board, and I appreciate Chris coming in, giving these talks. This is the second one or third one that you've done. And the board, I'm speaking for the library and the Laurel Board, we appreciate her coming in to make the council aware and mayor of what's going on with the library. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
I would just comment that it's very exciting to see there's so much opportunity and so much access to the community, whether it be for the legal counsel, or for the hotspots, or the laptops. I feel now more so than ever, it seems like a lot of job opportunities are first Zoom interviews, and if people don't have access to that, that also inhibits them from possibly getting those spaces, so I'm really appreciative that our library has all these opportunities for access to, to those things.
I think if COVID taught us anything, it, we, we all froze a little bit, but I think that after we were able to collect ourselves and really look at, at everything from kind of outside the box, kind of, and just try to reinvent or recreate library services. So when we come back now, we're not just coming back to what we were doing, we're coming back to all of that, plus everything we've added since. And it's been a little hairy at times, I'm not going to lie to you, especially without a full staff. But we've tried to do it, keeping everybody safe, not just our customers and everyone in the community, but our staff. And I feel like, no, not everybody's very happy when they come into the library about having to still wear a mask, but that's the reality, and that will continue for as long as we have to continue it to keep people safe. And so we do offer alternative services for people who can't or don't want to wear a mask. We, we, we've delivered books, we've delivered print jobs, we've copies, you know, you name it, fax jobs, all sorts of different things out the front door, and do whatever we have to, and like I said, the curbside service will stay, it will not be going away once everybody, you know, throws away the masks. We're going to continue to offer that service, because a lot of people really like it, and it's just customer service friendly, that's what it is. And we have our homebound folks, we've added to our homebound list since we started COVID. We have a number of elderly people at the Villa, the Mount, Summit, you name it. We've even delivered to houses during COVID. That's not just the Crookston Library, that's all of our locations within Laurel. So I think that a lot of, we, my, my, the executive director, Liz Lynch, and I, we did appear before the Senate Committee, the Senate hearing, hearing SF 1131, and we both spoke on behalf of our library system for this bill that Senator Mark Johnson authored, and we had a lot of support in that meeting, and it just, I think people realize now more than ever how important our libraries are to our communities, and certainly one the size of Crookston. I've said it many times, you take these resources out of Minneapolis, and you can go down the street and find them at least one other place, if not a half a dozen. You take them out of Crookston or someplace here in Polk County, and they've got to drive at least an hour, in many cases, or more, to obtain the same services, and I think we all found that out when it came to driving tests this past year. If anybody had a child that was taking a permit test, or an actual driving test, we had to drive 90 miles to get to a written test. And now the library, you can come to the library and actually take your test at the library, your written tests, too, and we'll be doing more proctoring again. So we're starting to see things open up, we're starting to see people come back and meet in groups, and we tried to accommodate as many as we could safely during COVID, but it just, in the, in all reality, we couldn't do everything the way we were doing it before. Just had a question tonight about some of the, you know, kids' items and the toy, and the things, not just toys, but, you know, educational, you know, toys, just, you know, and the Kindle Juniors and things like that, and, and we will safely put them out a little at a time and then clean them up, and if, if they're asked for, but we haven't just put them all out completely yet. We're just kind of waiting on that, so. But it's starting to get back to where it was, it really is, and we're excited about SLE, and we're excited about all of the possibilities, and certainly what we've added to the mix, because we think it's, we've worked really hard, you know, to add a lot of really great services for the, for the public, and I think that we're really starting to see a response. We've had people come in from Career Force, we've had people come in, a lot of people came in to do their taxes. I don't even know who gives out forms anymore besides the library. Used to be able to get them at the post office, you can't get them there anymore. So.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, and thank you for listening and for your support.
Okay, we have a couple proclamations tonight, starting with the first one. City of Crookston Merrill Proclamation to declare April 2021 National Volunteer Month, whereas we celebrate those who volunteer and encourage more to follow their path, no matter your age, background, or where you come from, you can have an impact through service. And whereas National Volunteer Month is an opportunity to recognize the impact of volunteer service and the power of volunteers to tackle society's greatest challenge, to build stronger communities and be a force that transforms the world. And whereas each year we shine the light on the people and causes that inspire us to serve, recognizing and thanking volunteers who lend their time, talent, and voice to make a difference in their communities. And whereas National Volunteer Month was established in 1974, and it's, and has grown exponentially each year, thousands of volunteers, projects, and special events scheduled throughout the month. And whereas today, as people strive to lead lives that reflect their values, the expression of civic life has evolved, whether online, at the office, to the local food bank, whether with a vote, a voice, or a wallet, doing good, doing good comes in many forms, and we recognize and celebrate them all. Now therefore, I Dale Stanbrook, Mayor of the City of Crookston, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as National Volunteer Month. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Crookston, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as National Volunteer Month. Ah, Diane. Here you go. Thank you for your time, Christian. Thank you. And one more here. City of Crookston Merrill Proclamation to declare March, May 9th through the 15th, 2021 as National Skilled Nursing Care Week, whereas we honor and respect our elders and citizens of any age with physical or intellectual disabilities reside in skilled nursing care centers in Crookston. And whereas skilled nursing care centers throughout our area are holding scheduled activities in observance of National Skilled Nursing Care Week, May 9th through the 15th, 2021, using this year's theme of Together Through the Season. And whereas I urge all citizens to virtually visit or call a loved one, family member or friends residing in any care setting, and offer a kind word and spend time participating in various virtual activities to unite those from all walks of life in need of our continuing love and support. And whereas my administration is committed to a quality health care, we take this moment to embrace the essence of the theme, Together Through the Seasons. Let's join all residents, patients, caregivers, nurses, other staff, and volunteers in celebrating this special week. And now therefore, I Dale Stanbrook, Mayor of the City of Crookston, do hereby proclaim May 9th through the 15th, 2021, as National Skills Nursing Care Week, a week to honor both our vulnerable citizens receive care and the dedicated ones giving care. In testimony whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Crookston, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim May 9th through the 15th, 2021, as National Skilled Nursing Care Week. Karen. Okay, one more presentation, banners and flags overview. I think that would be from our city attorney, Corky.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Recently, there have been a number of reports to some of you, to the police department, to our office, and to City Hall regarding banners, flags, and signs, that some have questioned as to whether they should be allowed, or whether they should be somehow prevented from flying or being displayed, or whether there should be some form of punishment. We do have a couple of examples. Chief Biermeyer and I worked on these together. Bottom line and the gist of this is that... Bottom line and the gist of this is that if you have to read a sign, it probably is not going to be regulated. It's a, it's a pretty basic concept. We do have sign ordinances here in Crookston, and the city council has said that signs are to provide an important medium through which individuals may convey a variety of messages. In addition, when they become able to be enforced or somehow prevented from being displayed, they typically would have to create traffic hazards, aesthetic concerns, and detriment to property values threatening public health. As you're all aware, the signs, banners, and flags come into controversy when they display messages that some are uncomfortable with. But the United States Supreme Court has said that the First Amendment allows four signs to convey messages that are not necessarily what each one of us would desire, what we find acceptable, what we think is a societal norm. But again, what is being monitored and what is being regulated here within the City of Crookston is the number, location, size, type, illumination, and other physical characteristics of the signs which are displayed. It is not the language. It is not the pictures. It is, are there a plethora of signs? How are they grouped? Where are they situated? And how are they displayed? The United States Supreme Court, the Minnesota Supreme Court, have both said that it is presumed that a sign ordinance which restricts free speech is unconstitutional. So there's a very strict standard which is employed by the United States Supreme Court and the state of Minnesota when it analyzes sign ordinances within the cities. Minnesota basically has one statute that deals with campaign signs as to when they can go up, when they must come down, but it really provides no sanction if they go up before or come down afterwards. I have personally looked at a number of signs and flags, gone out and viewed them specifically, done the research here to provide you with this broad, particular overview. And again, in our ordinance, it says it is not the purpose or intent of a sign ordinance to regulate the message displayed on the sign. Free speech, expressions of opinion with which we may not all totally agree. But again, keep in mind, if you have to read that sign in order to make a judgment about whether it's acceptable, it's probably not going to be something that can be addressed legally. What our ordinance anticipates and what the police department has observed and what we've worked with is signs by reason of position, shape, color, illumination, which interfere with traffic, traffic signals, or traffic signs are not permitted. Signs that resemble any official marker, state, or federal erected by a government or that display words as stop or danger and are not placed by a government agency are not allowed within the City of Crookston. So as you receive these complaints, if you will, if you receive concerns or problems or difficulty, I ask that you refer them to the city administrator who may refer them to our office. But again, even words that may be interpreted as vulgar, as obscene, are not necessarily able to be regulated. Each case is decided by itself. The police department in our town here make those observations. They refer complaints to our office, and we make a decision about whether it's prosecutable. But in the first instance, we make a decision is, are we able to obey that sign? Are we able to get the people who are displaying them to understand the importance of not having signs displayed in great numbers, near traffic, near intersections, which could cause a safety hazard? Any questions? Don?
Yes, you said something about later, that it went during a election, signs can be put up and taken down during certain times.
Yes.
Is that true?
The Minnesota statute, 211, I believe, indicates that signs are not to go up before 46 days prior to a general election. And they should come down within 10 days after the election. What they anticipate and what the cases show us is those are campaign signs. Vote for X, vote no for Y. Not just general expressions of a name or general expressions of I support Y. Again, if you have to read it, other than the campaign sign, very, very difficult to prohibit such a display of a banner, a flag, or a metal wood sign. Size certainly an element.
Thank you, thank you.
But like you said on that too, even the campaign signs, there's really nothing. There's, they're suggesting more or less you do take it down.
They're, they are suggesting that. And again, that's in the general election years. I, and the cities themselves can enact ordinances if they choose to, that are different than that general state statute, if they choose to. We in City of Crookston do not have such an ordinance with respect to campaign signs, banners, and flags. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Corgi.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Shall I make that motion, Your Honor?
First by Don and second by Clayton, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Jertie.
Hi.
Erickson.
Hi.
Briggs.
Hi.
Cavalier.
Hi.
Kressel.
Hi.
Clatt.
Hi.
Ved Breton.
Hi.
Melby.
Hi.
This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please? Whoops.
Ah, you didn't get a first.
Sorry. Need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Still moved.
Thank you, Joe, getting ahead of myself. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Steve. Now we can have roll call.
Jertie.
Hi.
Erickson.
Hi.
Briggs.
Hi.
Cavalier.
Hi.
Kressel.
Hi.
Clatt.
Hi.
Ved Breton.
Hi.
Melby.
Hi.
Okay, we have one public hearing.
Yes, Your Honor, item 7.01 is a public hearing on the City of Crookston's wellhead protection plan for its drinking water supply wells.
We'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council? If so, please come to the podium, state your first and last name and as well as your address. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing. Regular agenda.
Yes, Your Honor, item 8.01 is a resolution to approve the wellhead protection plan.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wayne, discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Jertie.
Hi.
Erickson.
Hi.
Briggs.
Hi.
Cavalier.
Hi.
Kressel.
Hi.
Clatt.
Hi.
Ved Breton.
Hi.
Melby.
Hi.
Item 8.02 is a resolution to order plans and specifications for the Central Park Campground Improvements, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Still move.
Thank you, Don, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Christie, discussion?
Any idea what this thing's going to cost us?
We have a, hopefully, a very clear idea as it really needs to stay within the budget that was submitted for the grant.
Okay, well, how much is the city going to have to put in?
The city match, I believe, is near $400,000 for the bathhouse, but that has been budgeted.
Well, I don't know. You know, as I talk to the public when I'm in the stores or the gas stations, I haven't really heard any of the public to think this is a good idea. I've heard some of the council people think that this is a good thing to do, but I just, this is a lot of money that we've got to stick up for something that the public, I don't think, is really sold on.
I was not here when this grant was discussed, but the grant award has been accepted, so we would have to go back to the grant administrator. If you'll remember, it includes other projects within that grant application. So the implications of one pulling out, I, I do not have an answer.
I think it'd be a bad idea to pull out because it's legacy dollars. It was awarded to the Red Lake River Corridor. The Red Lake River Corridor Committee said Crookston could move first on this. And if we deny this, we're going to have every community up and down the Red Lake River mad at us. And also, to try to get more legacy dollars down here into this area in the Red Lake River Corridor, it's going to be almost impossible.
Well, I don't know if I agree with that one or not, but I look at, you know, when this first came up about applying for the grant, we applied, we agreed to apply for the grant. Nobody knew if we'd get it or not. And then when we did get it, we really never had any other conversation after that about how much it was going to cost us? Are we going to spend that money or what?
We knew when we, and prior to, that we accepting the grant, the council knew what our cost share was into this project. And it was discussed down here.
It was kind of iffy whether we were going to do it or not, but.
Refresh me on what the order, the plans and specifications are going to cost. Are we paying those or the community, the whole partnerships pitching in on this or?
The, the plans and specifications, this, I have requested through this resolution, should council approve it tonight, to get the plans and specs that would determine what work needs to be done. And actually, I will be having further conversations on what timelines that looks like, what the project's going to come out as, and then how we're going to move forward with that bidding.
So what would, do you have any idea what the initial investment of this is going to be?
To order plans and specs?
Yeah.
I, I do not have that number off the top of my head. Rich, I hate to put you on the spot, and I don't expect you to cough up an answer if you don't have one, but.
I don't have one, but I can give, I can get your number.
I just want to make sure we are, as a city of Crookston, paying that initially upfront? And then, once a project comes together, that's where the rest of it comes in? Or was that number that we originally got, does that include that part of the making the plans and specifications?
I don't believe the grant dollars covered plans and specs or design that I saw. I don't believe it did.
And then has there been any, any thought or numbers of what it's going to cost us to run this thing? Because you can't, and Clay, you know, you run parks. You can't have a park design and not have a host 24/7. And he's going to have to be there seven days a week. And you're not going to get one person to do that. You're going to have to have at least two. I mean, this is going to be, I hate to say it, but it's going to be an ongoing money pit.
Well, you know, years ago, we had a chance to put an RV park in our city. And you were on council then.
And I voted to do it.
And it would have been privately owned.
Yep.
And it went south.
Yep.
And everybody, the naysayers that did not want it at Castle Parks said, why not Central Park?
Yep.
That's all I heard, put it in Central Park. So here we are, back to the drawing board.
But I also know Central Park can flood in the summertime. It can flood in the springtime. It can flood several times.
Oh, we had that conversation already once about how this stuff would be able to be removed and set up as that, thinking of the floods and the different things like that when we were last talking about it.
Right.
And I know, just listening to people, I know the pipeline's kind of a, I don't want to call it short term, but, you know, maybe a year or two. A lot of them want to bring campers back to Crookston. They, they love our community, how they are treated here. And right now, they're having a hard time finding anywhere to put a camper. So we're going to lose that money to this town by going other places at this point. So if, I think it's, it's a good thing to try to bring people to town, bring business to town. And Central Park is a place where they can walk. They can use our facilities uptown and in different places and just bring more business here. So I, I know, I think it's a pretty good thing, so.
How about, Amy, as far as, what is the timeline? Is, I mean, there seems to be a lot of questions on this. If we tabled it, so we get the information what this is going to cost to pre-plan? And could we table till next meeting or?
The construction has to be completed by June of next year. So we could probably go another meeting or so, but we need to start talking about moving forward with bids and things if that is the direction the council wishes to go.
Looking at the questions that hear, I think there is a lot of questions about, you know, timeframe and everything. Because this is almost, what, two years ago that we started this process? So, I mean, it's, we really haven't talked about it since. So, I mean, I'd like to see a table so it just doesn't get voted down or whatever instantly. Just my opinion.
I have a question. Amy, with the cost of construction stuff now during COVID, is there any way that this can be extended to a later date or?
I, I would be happy to ask that question. I believe that would be up to the grant administrators, and I don't know if they're, if they have that flexibility, but I can ask that question.
Because that's, I guess that would be one thing. I'm in favor of, of course, but I'm just wondering if, because of what I heard, 40% increase on materials and stuff now, you know, is that going to be an issue for the City of Crookston down the road? So I was just wondering if there's any way that we could check around to see if it can be delayed for a year to get things back down? Because I was just talking to the building inspector earlier today about the construction cost of people not moving on projects because of it.
Yeah.
Of the cost. So that would just be something if you could ask to check out.
I'm happy to ask that question, and that is true. Material costs have impacted several projects in our community. So I will ask that and try to get answers back from the questions that I've heard from you this evening and try to put that together for you to look at.
Can I make a motion to table this?
I got Scott.
We do have a first and second already on this.
All right, Scott, Scott, a question here or a comment?
I can, I can answer the part about the grant. They have closing dates on. We have some stuff from this last year that closes by June, that we have to have done by June 30. The state sets those for greater Minnesota Parks and Trails. So they have a closing date on portions of these things that have, the dollars have to be expended. Everything has to be set in by a certain date, and they don't prolong those. Another thing I can say that, I'll give you an estimate. They're giving us approximately $1.4 million to build this thing. So our portion is pretty minimal in comparison to do that campground.
I have a couple things. First, I do have concern that this council has already voted on this and has already made this commitment to the collective around the corridor. So I'm just going to throw that out there, that I am concerned that that is coming up now and should have been the discussion initially before we applied for this. I think the other thing is that we are in a space where we have a campground that has a lot of these amenities within 25 minutes. And if we are trying to be competitive as a city, I think it does us good, as Joe has mentioned, in providing more opportunity to, had considered that as well. I think that also, when we kind of go off tangent and talk about some of these other pieces that aren't necessarily solidified, these Grand Forks has a host, and the host is a person that does most of that job in exchange for the cost of rent and staying that month. So I think we have some very good alternatives and ways of managing, managing this with this out being a money pit, as you mentioned. So I think we should take those things into consideration, even as we table it and have maybe some more conversation about what these costs are. But I think we need to take those things into consideration as well. And also, I want us to be a good partner to the rest of the people in our quarter that we went together with to get this grant initially.
Your Honor? Well, first, Wayne had a comment here. Well, for Wayne had a comment here.
Yes, yes, Your Honor, I mean, it has been ongoing for quite some time here. And all of these issues were brought up, and your concerns were brought up. And they, council at that time said, hey, we still wanna do this, but that's also a safe house, right? Uh, storm shelter type thing. We're gonna be redoing our whole, you know, down in the park. Uh, we're gonna try and bring some life back to the downtown, we're trying to do different things down. It's one of the pieces of the puzzle that I think needs to be put in. And that's what we talked about over the last few years of, of agreeing to do this. Uh, nothing's cheap, and it's not gonna get any cheaper.
Your Honor?
Your Honor? I had a question for Scott. Uh, what effect would this have on the, if we tabled this, uh, on the Red Lake River Corridor with all the people who are in communities that are involved in this already?
Pardon, can you say it again?
What effect would this have on the Red Lake Corridor?
There's...
Red River Corridor, I mean, excuse me.
If we don't spend that money, and we give it back, the Red, the Red Lake River Corridor will not get any further grants.
What communities are all involved?
Six communities, Beaver Falls, San Lared, Red Lake Falls, Kirkston, Fisher, East Grand Forks, and they're all involved and have different little actions happening in each community.
Yeah.
As far as this goes, and it goes year by year.
And as said earlier, Your Honor, they, that it was said that the group got together, these cities got together, and they agreed that Kirkston be the key one. And so, like, said earlier, they're counting on what we do here.
I mean, my other concern of that is, though, I mean, this is way before COVID. You know, I'm not saying I'm against it, but at the same time, it's like, okay, one point four million, uh, take forty percent of that. Are we gonna get enough money to do what we wanted to do with the one point four, with a forty percent increase? That's my concern on it. It's not whether we discussed everything with how we did that thoroughly, but, you know, now with COVID coming through and, and the cost of, of all the stuff we're gonna buy for this thing, you know, I, I'd like to, just wanna see, what are we gonna get for one point four million and in our contribution?
And that, those are numbers we will not know until we go out for bid. And we cannot go out for bid without, um, design. But, just like we're working through with the, um, MinDOT Corridor RFP, we are going to have language in there that protects the city. If the quotes come in and blows the grant budget out of the water, we will reserve the right to reject any and all bids. Accepting bids does not mean you are committed to following through with that project. We will have language in there. Um, I've recently worked on one for the MinDOT Corridor study, because we don't know. We don't know right now. I've been hearing that material costs could go down in third quarter this year. We don't know that. And you will not know what impact COVID and cost of materials will have without bids, and we cannot get there without, um, plans and specs. I will also say, there are going to be some unanswered questions at this point. How do we staff it? That is what you have hired staff for, to make sure that we are looking at those things. You've got an administrator, you have directors and supervisors, and those are all things we are charged with vetting out and making responsible decisions for our community, for our community's safety, for our city's budget. We don't have all of those answers right now.
Your Honor, Chris has something.
Yes, Chris.
I just wanted to offer, um, to the council and, and to yourself there, um, for what it's worth, we, we have a number of the same people that come back every fall for the fall campaign that stay down in the park, in Central Park. They make big time use of the library, and we welcome that every year, love to have them back. I give out a number of temporary cards to those folks even. But I will add that I think that they would love to have some, some, a, a bathhouse down there. Uh, they use our, our bathrooms as, uh, for bathing. And as you will know, we don't have showers or tubs in our bathrooms. So, I mean, they really do need something at some point. And they've asked even, what can they do? We've even had people that have said they go out anytime. But they come in and they actually try to bathe in our bathroom in the sink, um, which poses some issues at times.
I think, you know, if we move forward with just, uh, getting, you know, plans and specs on this, we'll have a better idea what the cost is gonna be. So I think, you know, personally, I think we need to move forward.
I agree, I'd like to see, on, just like the highway project, I, I always like to see the specs. I mean, I know it's, we have spent some money to get the plans done, but I mean, I hate backing out of things or anything like that until we can see what actually it's gonna look like and do for the city. So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I guess right now, for seeing, moving forward with getting the plans done anyhow.
Your Honor, didn't, didn't I hear, if I heard Amy right, that four hundred is, is budgeted, right?
It is, that's correct. It is in our budget.
Pretty good commitment there, Tom, that you guys said yes.
Where, where are we taking that out?
It's, it is budgeted in the parks budget. Yeah.
Are we gonna have a, since we're gonna go through these bids and all this stuff, is this gonna come back around again, or is this just a done deal now?
You would have to have bids, the city council has to award the bid. So, it would be staff's job to put together the proposal, um, in cooperation with our engineer, go out and get bids and bring them back to you. But the city council has to approve and award the bid. So it will certainly come back before you.
And I can see what, I can see what Steve's talking about. We just had a Cheetah meeting the other day, and, uh, the Ag Innovation Campus there cutting that thing way back on account of the building costs.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, costs.
That's why we need the plans and specs, is kinda get a ballpark or a price that we're looking at before we can put it out in bids. At least we'll have a general idea, am I right, Rich?
Yes, absolutely. Once we get, you know, better handle on the quantities, the building, we can give a fairly reasonable or accurate estimate.
Sure, thank you.
Your Honor, I'd like to call a question.
Excuse me, miss?
Uh, I think Christie had one more.
Sorry, Don, just one more thing. Just, just for clarification, um, I think it has been addressed in the planning about the flooding, and that's very much part of the understanding, and the park will be designed as such. Um, the second piece I just wanna clarify is to make sure, what we're doing tonight is just voting on getting specs and plans. We're not voting for the park, we're voting to just make sure that we have the most educated understanding of what we're doing going forward. Is that not correct?
That is correct. We have to have these designs and specs in order to go out for bid for a contractor, to even put a proposal back for it.
And if your numbers go up that high, your, your design might go down a little bit, a few less places.
Probably.
Less road.
Yep.
So, I think Don's got it, no?
All right.
Your Honor, for recap, we have a motion by Donald, Don Cavalier, and we have it second by Christie Jertie, Your Honor, for a resolution to approve the order of plans and specifications on the Central Park campground improvements.
Yeah, I think we've had the discussion. Have roll call, please.
Jertie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Breton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Good job.
All right.
Your Honor, eight point zero three is a resolution to approve the city administrator to accept the airport coronavirus response grant program, so the ACRGP grant offer, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank Clayton, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Delane, thank you, discussion?
I can say just, uh, a little bit here. We did, this is a, another, um, grant for relief dollars for coronavirus that will help support our airport. Um, our city attorneys looked at it. S E H, our airport consultants have also had discussions with me about it, and we, staff recommends, um, that, that you accept the grant so we can move forward with that and get a little bit more support for our airport.
Thank you. Have roll call, please.
Jertie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Breton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Okay, it brings us to reports, Amy.
Well, first, Chris, thank you for coming. I was not aware that we've had our library here for sixty years, so that's exciting. And the library's doing some really great things for our community. I hope all of you will check out their website. I will watch for the press release and also share that on our Facebook page when that comes out, um, for the hours. Um, also, as a reminder, we are broadcasting live on the city's YouTube channel. I have been posting that link in our Facebook post, and if you follow that link, you can go and, um, watch live, or you can also subscribe and click to set alerts if you wanna be notified when the city's broadcasting live. So encourage everyone to do that. And that is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll start with Chief Rober tonight.
Uh, nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. How about the two Scots, since you're sitting together?
Nothing for me tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Chad?
What report, Your Honor?
Once again, you're doing a great job back there. Ryan way in the back.
Having your report, thank you, Your Honor.
Anything from Witseth?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Greg?
No report tonight, Charlie.
Uh, Mr. Biermeyer moved on me tonight.
Not gonna ruin it for you, for today.
Okay. Um, Pat? I had to save the best for last. Welcome, Brandon, from the Water Department. Good to see you here. Start with, uh, Mr. Melby tonight.
Hey, it's just nice to see, uh, the girls softball playing today outside. Uh, cleanup week is continuing, and all the youngsters are playing outside. So it's gonna be spring soon enough, we can maybe get the golf course. I think they had a tournament today, so things are looking up.
Good to hear. Christie?
Um, I was at our parks meeting this, uh, last week, and a lot of great opportunities for recreational activities, um, including club kits, which I'm sure a lot of parents are excited to see back in the community. Um, and then also, um, I was unable to make our, the DCDP meeting, but, um, it looks like they're quite the busy bees and, uh, providing lots of opportunities in the downtown, um, with some, some work that they're doing, so it's exciting to see as well. Um, I would say some of the highlights is, um, they're working on a, an AARP grant to provide some directional signage for walking paths. Um, and I know the three trucks have been a big hit so far, so it seems like that's going well. Um, and then the other thing that I would say, um, that they're working on is getting some historical information about the beautiful buildings we have downtown. So, a lot of pretty stuff coming out of, um, that committee, so.
Great, thank you. Steve?
Yeah, the only thing I got is, uh, I'd like to see us keep working on that master calendar somehow to figure that out, because I just look at what Chris did, you know, if you have all these events and these good things, where somebody go on a website, whether it's ours, theirs, everybody's stuff were, is on there, you know? It's kind of a one-stop shop. I think, uh, I think it'd be worth our time and effort if we get something figured out to, to do that with all the events that we have in Kirkston, cause there's lots of things going on, but you have to go to so many places to find them. I just, I'd like us to keep working on that.
All right, thanks, Steve. Clayton?
I'd like to thank the councilman for the, uh, and Chad and Steph for going live with, uh, council meeting, because, uh, this afternoon and today, I had, while I was out in my yard working, I had the residents from my work who were thanking me for us, for putting this live. So, they're out there watching, and a couple of them said they don't really care to go down to City Hall, but they enjoy seeing it live, so it's working, so, thank you. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Don?
I would like to thank the council members and also the city for, uh, all the good discussions that we've had over the past months. It seems like we're moving forward as a group, and we're looking good. And I really feel comfortable right now as a member of the council, so. Thank you, council members and the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Joe, anything?
Just wanna give the city crew thanks today. They're in my neighborhood cleaning up, and they always do such an amazing job. They get in, get out quick, they clean it nicely, and hardly know they're there, so I just wanna tell them that they're doing a great job. That's it, Your Honor.
Yep. Delane?
I just wanna thank Chris for her presentation tonight. Lot of good information in there. Um, I really, um, am impressed about the, the hotspots and laptops that our library offers. Think, um, I think that's a good, um, thing our community does. Thanks.
Thank you, Delane. Tom?
Yeah, thanks, Chris, that was a nice presentation you gave. Uh, and then this week, we had a Cheetah meeting, that, or last week, I should say, and we did another B three grant for one of our local businesses, so hopefully we'll see some signage growing up. That'll be nice. It's a, it's kind of a, it's a family business, it's been in Kirkston for quite a while. Um, we had a presentation about the Ag Innovation Campus, it was pretty good. Other than, other than the fact that, uh, like you said, they're gonna have to scale it back some, cause the cost of building has been outrageous for them. We had a, we had our meeting down at Wolf Court, and then we had a tour of Wolf Court. We seen some of the plumbing project that they just finished, some of the rooms that they've upgraded. And then we got, went up on the roof, and we seen the project is still gonna be done. But, uh, but we had a nice tour of it. They, uh, we went to their, to their nursing service. They have a twenty-four seven nursing service over there for residents that need it. So it's very well unit that Kirkston needs, so it was a nice tour.
Thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Also, I, thanks, Chris, overload of information once again. It's always great, uh, to hear the updates and refresh our course too, so, thank you. And Scott, it's, uh, back to normal much as possible with park and rep programming, right?
That is correct.
Okay, hopefully everything goes well.
Most of our activities are on site, so we're, I could just grasp what you're, you're under that, so.
Good to know. Um, also, there's a benefit for Brent Schultz coming up. He was in an accident in American Crystal. I think it's May eighth at the Eagles, spaghetti supper. So if, you know, you got the opportunity to go up there, have a good meal, or even make a donation, I think family would be greatly appreciated, so.
You know, Your Honor, if you remember, Hugh, Brett was down here.
Yes.
Talking about the lights on the walkway. So if that refreshes out who, who he is.
So, okay. Nice family, and so, kind of my neighbors out there, so, anyway, if you can make it, it'd be great. Uh, just a reminder, there is nothing, there won't be a Ways and Means meeting tonight, so nothing else to become before council, we are adjourned. Thank you.